Okay, all right. It is ten o'clock. This is a Bill and Court regular meeting. June eighteenth, and we are in Arlington today. Meeting is called to order. A quorum has been established and will now help apply slowly. I have one allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome. Someone's coming in. Okay.
Jed.
Jed.
Hello. Okay, are there any additions or revisions to the agenda? No. I do want to have consideration of the joint letter opposing House Bill twenty-seven, twenty-five for consideration. And let's add that under new business first item. Oh, it's it's actually under correspondence.
Three, two.
Three point two. Do you want to move it? As far as action goes, so. Reading it.
Okay.
All right. Correspondence and public comment. Individuals wishing to address the county court may do so at this time and at other times throughout the meeting. Speakers are asked to raise their hand and be recognized by the chair, give their name and the city, and leave their comments to three minutes. And we have two people. Would you like to come in as well?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make sure and put you down. Thank you. All right. We have two people, actually. First of all, we have Mark Moore. Community daycare update. Yes, come up here and take a seat.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you. So my name is Mark Moore, representing the Board of Directors for Arlington Community Daycare. I just wanted to come and meet the court, see how things are going, and give you guys an update of where we're at. When I started, we were, there was quite a bit of discussion about what type of facility we needed to be under licensing. We've moved our licensing forward to a facility, so it's now officially a facility. After going through the process of getting through compliance issues and working with Amy Abara from the state. She's been really good to us and walked us through the process very well. Ashley has been doing a great job at managing the daycare forward as we go. We are, I think we're at right now. We are talking about a building plan to expand. Right now, we have sixteen students enrolled, and we're almost at waitlist level.
Wow, that's great.
So yeah, that's exciting. We've never been at a waitlist level, I don't think, in past history, so. I just heard that from our daycare director. It's exciting news. I believe our role has doubled in the last two weeks, so also exciting. But because of that and the expected influx of people coming to town soon, we foresee the need to build a larger facility that will accommodate more students and also separate students by age group in a more effective manner than we can right now. As far as that progress, we need to hire a consultant and just move forward with it. The board is just now getting to that place of conversation after dealing with a lot of, a lot of issues. So that's about where we are at the moment. We did get a lot of assistance from Denise and Lindvall from the city to kind of help pave the path for a new place, but the board decided that it wasn't the direction they wanted to go this week. And maybe just a little too quick. But I, and I think they were, they were making the right choice to be conservative and not get too, too in over our heads too quickly. But we do plan on doing something, especially with the property we currently have. Looking it over, I think everyone feels like it's big enough to really accommodate something else. Trying to figure out what that looks like in the near future.
I think Waste Management donated your building originally thirty-plus years ago.
That's what I've heard.
So, yeah.
Yeah, it was used in nineteen ninety. It was already, yeah.
It was already used.
Yeah, it was an office trailer or whatever, but. Do, I have one quick question. I mean, how many, so you're at sixteen now? How many do you think you can go up to with what you have? Or is that the limit?
I believe, and this is off the top of my head, so you can quote me, but I'll have to correct it later. I think I was told that the facility, with an exception, can be brought up to twenty-one or two students. That might be a little conservative. It's in the twenties.
But you're.
And we're, so we're bumping up against that right now. As it is, we take students of a wide age range, which means that we have a lot of, it was, they're overlap with where they are, their location, because it's basically one big open building. So having a lot of older kids with a lot of younger kids can cause trouble. They're working really hard to separate and, you know, rotate them in and outside and that kind of thing. But the need's coming up rapidly to have a different type of.
Do you know how, do you know how old children you're taking?
Okay, this is also off the top of my head, but per our previous conversation, I think we can go up to as high as sixteen years old. I may be wrong about that, it might be twelve. And we're, we're taking infants at this point, too, because of the facility that we have, we're able to do that.
Okay. All right.
That's all I have to offer.
Are there any questions? Thank you.
Yeah.
Very good. So I, I'll just have a comment. Can they use the, the capital projects? Can they be used as for consulting fees if they need?
Um, I believe so. I believe we could do that. Yeah. So you might look, you might look at that grant application and see if that's something you guys can. It's, and students can be quite expensive.
That I know. I would love to run this project myself, being a former carpenter, and I was going to move into being the construction business owner before I decided to come teach. So, you know, the, I, I want to run it, but I, I don't think I have the.
Yeah, it's a commercial and all that there.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, let's look at the grant application.
Absolutely.
Contact Brooklyn at the courthouse. Brooklyn is our finance director.
We know her well, and she's been very good to us. Yeah.
And then, yeah, we can see if those costs would apply.
Great. Good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, Lindvall.
Good morning, Court.
Morning.
Thanks for letting me talk this morning. To the Gillum County Court and specifically to the attention of Commissioner Leah Watkins. Leah, you are correct. I only spoke of grants. That was intentional, as I was referring specifically to the court agenda on the May seventeenth, on May seventeenth, when I penned my letter to the editor, included the court members as recipients. The sole and only purpose of the letter was to use the court's own agenda and their intended grant awards for that meeting. You state I'm targeting DeCondon Early Learning. Right here on page one. I only used them as an example of the disparity of grant awards north slash south. Early learning has been given over two million dollars in the last year. Leah, your copious spreadsheets are primarily about money allocated to different taxing districts. While it served your purpose of attempting to equal things between north and south, it does not address the topic of my letter. As you know, the taxing district's distribution has nothing to do with our county court. The state determines how these monies are distributed. However, as you also know, the monies are distributed according to what taxing district lies in the area the tax dollars and SIP funds are, were generated. So that being the case, I want to thank you for your research. It's now very clear to see where the tax dollars are generated and where they're being spent. So let's state the obvious. The tax dollars and SIP discretionary funds are generated in the north and spent in the south in disproportionate amounts. Let me be clear on the subject of early childhood development. I love all Gillum County kids and want them to have every advantage possible within reasonable cost. Underlined. The USA Department of Education has made it abundantly clear that how much money we spend on education doesn't determine the quality of that education. Our Department of Education is first in the world on education money spent per child, but ranked in the lower fifty percentile in learning. Oregon has a dubious distinction of being number forty-second out of the fifty states. So please don't confuse money with quality when it comes to education at any level. Lastly, but not least, if you choose to use my name in court, head of curriculums, stick to the topic of the letter. Disproportionate county grant awards. In closing, I've often said numbers don't lie. Well, now I have to admit, if you conflate numbers in an attempt to obscure the truth, they can appear to have an untrue meaning. I have here in my hand eight pages of spreadsheets provided by Commissioner Watkins that conflate tax dollars with actual court spending on discretionary slash grant awards. To get the truth, all you need is two columns of grant awards. One labeled north, one labeled south. It's simple, but it's true. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions, Leah?
No. Okay, the last person who's in court here today is Jed Crowder. Come on up.
Thank you, Jed Crowder with the Court of Arlington. I recently became aware of the House Bill twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-five. And the discussion planned on today. I know these items move quickly in the legislature and it's, it's hard to stay on top of all of that. But I just wanted to make sure we have a cohesive approach and maybe, maybe this letter helps maintain that approach for SIPs and the overall reports. But just interested to follow the conversation and how that will lay out.
Okay, so you're aware, have you seen the letter that's proposed by Moro County?
Yes.
And several of these counties are having their court sessions right now. So I believe Hood River County already acted. The others are court sessions today, so.
Yeah, have you, have you saw that one, Jed?
Basically, the gist of it is, I think the position of the letter is i- if courts are going to be involved, we hope they're involved for all counties. And that's the way the legislation is currently, the ports are involved. But singling out certain counties so they don't have to involve ports puts potentially counties like Gillum County maybe at a disadvantage. Are you reading it the same way?
Somewhat, I, I don't know. I mean, the, the intent there is to avoid a disproportionate impact and, you know, ports don't want to kind of have veto powers and have a tug of war between, between a port and county commission, in my view.
No.
And, and of course, this is more global statewide, where you're trying to enact laws for the whole state. Some of those earlier ones did target specifically Moro County and others with specifics just for them, as opposed to a statewide uniform process. And maybe that's what this is attempting to achieve, is to have insistency throughout the state.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any online, is there anyone online for public comment? I don't think so. No. Okay.
What's the name of the House?
Oh, the House bill is twenty-seven, twenty-five.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a, a letter from Gillum County resident Katie Cook. This was to all of us in the Times Journal, I believe it was a letter to the editor, and I'm just including it in the packet. To whom it may concern, the Condon Early Learning Center is an integral part of the Condon community, and it should be supported unequivocally. And the early nineteen nineties Judge Laura Prior formed a coalition of concerned community members because the need for consistent state childcare was increasing. Due to county support and the committed hard work of several community members, a childcare center was opened in-house in the Condon Baptist Church. After outgrowing this space, it was then relocated to the old Condon Gray School Building, which it also outgrew. Thanks to the visionary leadership of Jennifer Bold and the Board of Directors, a coveted Ford Family Foundation Grant and other funding sources were obtained so that a new center could be built. Now thirty years in the making, quality childcare continues to be a growing need, and for this reason, Gillum County should do everything possible to support this valuable community resource. Finally, since the C E L C is receiving public funding, organizational accountability and transparency are indeed vital, but it must be remembered that if surveys or unnecessary supervisory tactics are used, the county needs to err on the side of caution because excessive overreach and negatively impacts staff's morale when they are the ones who are earning low salaries that often do not reflect the value of their professional training and hard work. Okay, so the next letter is a proposed letter of joint opposition to House Bill twenty-seven, twenty-five. This is in reference to what Jed had to say. This letter was proposed to the five counties affected, and it was drafted in Moro County by Moro County Administrator Matt Jensen. Respected state, this is a proposed letter, so I'm just going to read it. There will be an action item under new business for us to discuss whether or not we agree to sign on to this letter. As representatives of the counties most impacted by House Bill twenty-seven, twenty-five, we unitedly stand opposed to the proposed bill and amendment. House Bill twenty-seven, twenty-five is a response to House Bill two zero zero nine, twenty twenty-three. In that omnibus bill, House Bill two thousand nine provided a much-needed adjustment to payments in lieu of tax programs by increasing the participation of special districts. Unfortunately, a late amendment added ports as a primary party to any strategic investment program, SIP. Notably, none of the staff materials or testimony addressed the purpose of adding ports. The result is that the scope of poor taxing districts has extended far beyond their operational boundaries, thus creating an adverse impact upon the county's ability to utilize SIP incentives. Including ports in the SIP equation on equal grounds with counties and cities allows the twenty-four ports to have a disproportionate representation over other special districts and creates a de facto veto power for the ports in fourteen counties when it comes to SIP incentives. While House Bill twenty-seven, twenty-five attempts to reduce this impact of House Bill two thousand nine, twenty twenty-three, it fails to do so comprehensively and focuses the program on a small number of counties in an arbitrary manner, devoid of any justification or explanation. The introduced bill, House Bill twenty-seven, twenty-five, effectively results in House Bill two zero zero nine impacting only three counties, Columbia, Moro, and Yuma Tilla. The amended bill would directly impact five counties with ports along the Columbia River, Hood River, Wasco, Gillum, Moro, and Yuma Tilla. Neither action provides any reason why these counties need to be treated differently from the rest of the state. The counties along the Columbia River are being unduly targeted through House Bill twenty-seven, twenty-five. We ask for your support in treating all counties equally in consideration of SIP use for economic development. If the western counties can utilize SIP agreements without court participation, then all counties should have that capability. We ask that your consideration for equitable treatment and to oppose House Bill twenty-seven, twenty-five until all counties are treated equally. So that's the letter that was presented to us. Okay, any other correspondence that I've missed? That takes us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes meeting minutes from May twenty-first and June fourth, approval of Oregon Health Authority Funding for Public Health Agreement, consideration of an amendment for intergovernmental agreement with Hood River County for medical examiner services, and consideration of approval of an agreement for community counseling solutions to provide mental health services. Are there any questions about those items on the consent agenda?
The only one I had was on four point three. I didn't, they've been doing this for, since twenty twenty? Okay.
Yeah.
I, I think we had somebody doing that a couple of years ago, but.
Yeah, there was. Anya, can you refresh my memory on what Chris Simmons told us yesterday about who had been doing it?
It was Clackamas, well, Clackamas County was doing train, or the.
That the medical examiner services, I couldn't remember who she said did it before, and then they went to Hood River.
The training was done by Clackamas County before, so the deputies would be gone for five or six days. And now Hood River does it, they do it for free as part of the agreement. I don't remember who was doing the, actually, the work.
Well, they tried to tie it, but I was thinking it was the gentleman at Condon, Dave.
Who am I?
No. It was a, okay, what name?
Oh, Dave Jones? Yeah.
Yeah. That's.
He was a medical examiner.
Years ago.
Yeah.
I blew his mind.
Okay.
So is the, the community counseling solutions, that's just the annual?
Yes, so it's similar to public health, where we have the agreement with O H A, but we have to have a local agreement for them to deliver
Path through.
the mental health services that we have to agree to, so. So we have under four point oh in your packet, is there a motion or any further questions?
It'd be nice if their one was extended, too. That's for another day.
Yeah.
I'm all moved to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
I will second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Unfinished business, we have any unfinished? No. There's no unfinished business. New business. Six point oh, the first action is to dispass the letter opposing House Bill twenty-seven, twenty-five. Are there any thoughts?
I'm good with it.
I didn't know there were so many port districts.
Uh huh, right. And I guess my position originally was, we have a great relationship with the court. This isn't about that at all. It's about being treated differently. And the way the law currently is, ports are involved. And if, and if that law's going to change, singling out certain ports and putting Gillum County at a disadvantage by potentially a business saying, I'm going to go pursue a SIP agreement somewhere else where there are, there's not so many players in negotiation. It might be, might, might be an advantage. Either treat us all the same, all or none, is, is just my thought on that. But I didn't see any proposed legislation whatsoever that was eliminating ports in this legislation. Entirely, so.
Yeah. Okay. That's good.
Yeah, go ahead. Yes, it's, you're involved, yes.
Yeah, so I'm not aware either of what the State Courts Association might think about this. I should be aware, but I'm not, because it moves so quickly. Just a question. These five counties have divided and prepared this level. How long have you known about this issue?
Uh, we knew about this for, we knew that, that, that the port legislation was out there, and it was discussed whether or not we approved, uh, support it or not. And that was a meeting that happened here, I don't think it was in May, it might have been April, perhaps. And that, we did write a letter about Gillum, Gillum County being singled out. That we did support and agreed to write a letter about that specifically. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So what do they, what do they have as far as ports in Wasco and Hood River? Is there a port for each one of those counties?
Yes. Yes.
So basically, this is affecting five ports with the five county.
Right. So it's basically a geographic solution, not nothing more than a geographic solution, is the way I see where they're picking out these five ports. And then the port department doesn't have to.
I read the earlier legislation.
Right.
They singled out some of those that had different operational challenges or advantages, whatever. Is, is this timely? It needs to be approved now, so the legislature.
It is timely, yes. The other option.
It'll be drought in up to June, won't it?
Yes. The other option is, we wrote a letter already about it, specifically about Gillum County being singled out. I'm just presenting you with a, an option one and an option two. If you're uncomfortable with this wording in a global way, we can still, if we still believe we're in opposition of House Bill twenty-seven, twenty-five for our own reasons, is it possible to pull up that letter?
So when we did before?
Yeah.
Do, do you have some, do you have some concerns, Jed, about this?
Sounds like.
It's too new to me to really, you know. I, I'm not sure which side I should be on. I don't want to be in unity with.
Right.
Approach.
Yeah.
And I like the idea of a equal treatment for all, all counties.
Right.
Yeah, so I might be leaning on the side of go ahead and support and be cohesive with your other five county, the other four counties.
Right.
You know, that might have more clout in the legislature.
It's the amendment. I think it's more powerful with.
Yeah.
In times of that essence, too.
Yeah, and the, and the amendment is what we're talking about. Uh, the amendment where suddenly the five of us are treated differently than the rest of the state. When it's hard enough for counties like Gillum to attract businesses in the first place. And it's just, it's just knowing, dealing with, with a recent SIP agreement, it's, it is more cumbersome to have more players at the table, and I would guess that a business might think that. And I, unintended consequence of something like this, so.
Yeah, I think approval would, would spur that conversation of the amendment and allow Salem legislators, you know.
Right.
Legislation in Salem to be their, their due diligence and come to their conclusion.
Right. Yeah. This isn't, I don't see it as harmful at all, and that's one thing for us to consider. There's, there's no, there's no harm. We're just asking, I think, for equal treatment. We feel comfortable with it? Want to talk about it a little more? Okay.
Yes, good question.
Yes.
How, I was trying to read up on this bill. I'm just very curious, what the negative impact? I understand that it makes the port a player in SIP funds.
Yeah. Which they currently are. That was the two thousand nine.
Yeah.
Then into, and then in this session, House Bill twenty-seven, twenty-five, the one you were just looking at, it made a few changes to ports. Then the amendment singled out, well, it doesn't actually say it. It says the easternmost dam on the Columbia River. Well, unless you dig into what that is, that's Wasco, Hood River, Gillum, Moro, and Yuma Tilla are required to, to deal with ports in their SIP agreements, but the other ports are not. So.
So basically, it has another player to be careful with.
And it allows some to not have the ports involved.
Yeah.
And, well, some of us do. Uh huh, yeah. I think here in Gillum County, having as many people at the table is a good thing. But, yeah.
So I'll move to support the letter of joint opposition to House Bill twenty-seven, twenty-five.
I'll second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the letter of joint opposition to House Bill twenty-seven, twenty-five. It has been moved and seconded to um approve the letter of joint opposition to House Bill twenty seven twenty five. Um, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Consider right away application for Lexington Pump LLC, six point one. Uh, a briefing from Road Department, Office Manager. Consider approval, installation of a water line under Bates Road. And the recommendation is to approve. Any questions?
I don't have any, I just, I know they didn't have a date for whatever this is, but. This is something that I still want to try to improve.
Yeah, right, uh huh, okay.
But I, I'm good with it.
Okay, we need to make sure there's a date on the um.
Yeah.
Application, okay. Okay, all right.
I don't have any questions more about, I'm okay with it.
Do we have a motion?
Like they got six five twenty five for the day? On the next page, on the, you can look at the page on the left, yeah.
I just, I was just looking for this before, and that was off.
Um, well, it did, I was just clicking, they got the date right there.
Yeah.
Okay. There a motion?
I'll uh move to approve the right away application from Lexington Pump LLC as presented.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to um prove right away application for Lexington Pump LLC, is there any? Is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Right. Consider approval of Amendment Five to Gillum County Attainable Housing Program Agreement with Pioneer Community Development Corporation. Rob Turry, are you online? Um, let me make them a. Just a moment. I'm not hundred percent sure it's him, but there is a Rob on there still. I just said, is this Rob, I thought, doesn't decide. Okay, okay, so you're. Rob, you're muted, you're listening. Rob, are you there? Okay, we're gonna just wait a moment for you. It's not on this end, okay? Is there anything he wanted to chat in that we can convey? I don't know if he has the volume turned way down, maybe on his computer. Okay, but he's, he's not muted. We're working on the sound. All right, Rob, um, we're just gonna go ahead and go into the discussion. And this is a agreement use. Of the Economic Enhancement Fund that has been longstanding between Gillum County and the Pioneer Community Development Corporation. Um, with, uh, as you can see at the last meeting. P C D C provided their accomplishments and what has happened with their incentive programs. You will see the original agreement that was put in place. Uh, wait, long time ago, two thousand seventeen eighteen. And then some amendments to that agreement to um utilize additional funding. Um. What this amendment does is just extends the date. Of repayment on the loan portion of this, of all of the funding sources. And it had ended July first, twenty twenty five, and the only change to this agreement is that. It would be extended to July first, twenty thirty. Oh, there he is. Can you, can you hear us, Rob, we see you?
He said his sound isn't working there, man.
No, no, so.
Is it on his end, do you think?
I think so.
Okay.
You wanna put your comments in the chat that we, yeah, I can read those out loud, I don't know if you wanna just type those really quick. Um, it says P C D C thanks you for extending the M L U, and he will send a signed copy to me.
Okay, all right, if it's approved, okay, if approved. Does anybody have any questions? It's been a very successful program, all of the amendments include how the agreement changed over time. And, you know, based on the needs of, of the community, um. I think we're really lucky to have P C D C working on this. Housing end of. Of our mission.
Yeah, it's helped clean up some dilapidated.
Yes. Uh huh, housing, right, so.
And I think.
Wafer. Also in Arlington, as well as Condon.
Uh huh.
Okay. And it helped the Ball Hill project as well, correct? It's part of it. Okay, uh.
Do we just need to approve that Amendment Five?
We just need to approve Amendment Five.
I move to approve Amendment Number Five to the Gillum County Memorandum of Agreement for the Attainable Housing Incentive Programs.
I will second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded to approve Amendment Five for the Gillum County Attainable Housing um. Program with Pioneer Community Development Corporation to extend the date of repayment to the county. To July first of twenty twenty, excuse me, twenty thirty, that's the amendment. Um, is there any discussion? Okay, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, consider approval of fiscal year twenty five capital investment grant for Arlington School District. Arlington School District has submitted a capital investment grant for uh forty five. Uh, thousand dollars for uh walkway for A D A compliance. Um, the grant committee is recommending funding. And this is to accommodate all who need A D A, but there's a, there's a student who needs accommodations next year. We wanna make sure that we meet those accommodations. There any questions about the application?
Grant Committee had, didn't have any questions?
No.
Okay.
No. They reviewed and made a funding recommendation to, to fund.
I didn't see anything wrong with it. I'll move to approve the capital investment grant of twenty twenty four dash twenty five as follows. Arlington School District in the amount of forty five thousand.
I will second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the capital investment grant for twenty twenty four twenty five. As follows, Arlington School District in the amount of forty five thousand dollars, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I was feeling, mostly, I just thought you were still.
Nope, I.
Not trying to make you deal or, or this, okay.
Consider approval of agreement with South uh Gillum County Health District. I'll allow Leah to take this one if you'd like to.
Okay, so previously, we've all had just um one year agreements. And it was um decided that it might be better to have. A two year agreement that would go along with the biennium that is set by the state with, for funding. Um, so, and also the Oregon Health Authority Agreement is a two year agreement too, so. So they'll all coincide together, and then the other change we made was um to not list out all the program elements. Because those are ever changing, some have went away, some are added, so um. Just to keep it cleaner, uh, we took that.
Okay.
Part out. The amendments that we get. Like the fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and the year, they all list out the program elements. And, you know, whether there's a de- decrease or increase in the award, so.
So this is the agreement, we are the um local public health authority, and this is an I G A between Gillum County. And South Gillum County Health District to provide the um, yeah, public health services.
Yes.
And all the reporting falls on them, right?
Yeah, yeah. And Commissioner Watkins.
Yeah. Daylene um heads that up, cuz she is actually the administrator for the Gillum County. As well as her pat, at public health, so. And we are currently, I told Chris earlier that I, on Friday. I'm going to the health district cuz I'm, will be spending most of the day there doing the triennial review, so. We've started it. Um, but apparently, I'm, will be doing most of the work for the state.
Okay, the only thing on the motion, we should probably just say that it's for the um twenty five, twenty seven biennium, it's just the, the motion. When it's, when we make it, uh, probably should just say that.
So everybody good with us?
So is there?
I'll, I'll move to approve the agreement with South Gillum County Health District. As presented for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty seven biennium as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agreement with South Gillum County Health District for the twenty twenty five, twenty seven biennium. As presented. Um, is there any other discussion? There any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Do you second that one?
Yeah.
Yes. I'm beat her to the punch.
Um, I do have a question for Mark.
Yes.
Mark, can, can I ask, sorry to bring you up here, it's just easier for the crowd to hear you. Arlington County Childcare did not ask for any funding this year, were you aware of that?
I, I was, yeah, I found out, we, we had that delay in receiving the remainder of funds from, grant from last year. And that only just came through, I think about a month, maybe two months ago. Because of the issues we've been cleaning up with, with the organizations.
So you're, you're, yeah, just wanted to, to, to make sure that we were clear.
Yeah.
While you were here.
Yes.
On that.
Um, is it possible for us to still acquire something in, you know, from this last, cuz I know this is our last meeting of the year for you guys, right?
Um, yes, so we were talking about the operational support grants that have opened and um closed are. Um, for next year.
Right.
So those are, those are closed.
Oh, for next year?
Uh, yeah, for operational support, correct?
But capital and investment grants, even though it says closed on the website, um. It was discussed a couple of meetings ago that to contact Brooklyn, um. And she'll talk to the Grant Committee, but it sounds like if it's a, you know, tiny job, the essence kind of project.
Right, it's for your project, yeah, so there's, there's going to be. Oh, close to two million dollars, it looks like, available.
Okay.
Um, for the capital investment funding.
That's very good.
Yeah, which is building buildings and as Commissioner Watkins says, potentially the engineering is, as long as it qualifies.
So we would need to have grants and everything in place to propose that, uh, application, is that right?
Uh huh.
Okay, sorry, I didn't mean grants, I meant bids, you know, and all of that, I apologize. Language is flooding in my head right now.
Well.
And I just, we're just not there on that project yet, we're just beginning it, so it, it was hard for me to say, we should go ahead and apply when we didn't have anything to represent.
Right, um. Commissioner Watkins, do you know if, in comparison, the Condon Early Learning Center, when they got their one point seven million, did they have bids? Or, or we need to research that, cuz I don't think they got the bid until they had some idea.
I think they did, cuz I think they.
Uh huh.
Used Jeff um Shaw.
As their engineer, so their engineer kind of told them their range, maybe.
Yeah, like, you know, what size it was gonna be and potentially what it would cost and.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, and we just haven't gotten to that place as an organization, so, yeah.
Maybe the court paid for his consulting fees.
Okay.
I don't know what pod it came out of, but.
I think so too, and it might have been COVID, the COVID funds, yeah.
I uh, I would like to add that I, from my last comment time, I, I was, I was graciously invited to be a part of the uh, the Board of Directors. Meeting just to sit in last, last night for Condon, had a great interaction with them. And I'm looking forward to a fruitful future relationship with them, so I thought I'd let you guys know about that as well.
Good.
Good. So.
Does that answer everything?
That's all, thank you, I just, since you were here, and, you know, this is a topic of discussion in recent times, so I just wondered what.
You know, it's important for me to stay up on, on, on it, and there's some things I need to learn as well, and if anybody has time to give us a little bit of coaching, that'd be.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Well, I, I would say I would keep in touch with the court, and if, if funding does get tight, that. Um, maybe we can look at some other avenue to help, cuz I hate for you to. Go this far along and then, you know, hit a brick wall, cuz funding is.
We're gonna keep going forward.
Yeah.
Of course, and that's definitely our goal, I guess I didn't realize we needed to be ahead of your budget for next year, and that was what we were working on, so.
Uh huh, okay.
Yeah, thank you for your time, though.
Yeah, thank you. All right, um, okay, uh. Any other business we missed before we get to announcements? No, okay, it was a fairly light agenda this time, um. Go ahead, do you wanna start, Commissioner Watkins?
I, um, so I was talking about the triennial review with O H A. Um, I sat with um Daylene the other day, and we went through the pre-meeting. Um, with the gal from O H A, and then we, I had to follow up with getting documents from Brooke, which. Brooke, for being on the fire was great to get those right out to me, and um, I passed them along to O H A. So it'll be a process, but hopefully sometime in July we'll be through that process and done. I also sat through the McKed meeting that they had, um. It was their budget meeting, so it was quite lengthy. And uh, at the end of it, it's uh, like I told Chris, it's like the, it's six to twelve months. Now that it, I think everything's approved on their end, but it has to go to the um Economic Development Administration. And that could be six to twelve months before we get to be able to be represented on the McKed board.
Good, probably twenty six.
Yeah, which will be, I mean, it's a long time to go without the city of Condon, or city of Arlington, or the county being.
Uh huh.
Not represented, and there is, and grants within their system that we can qualify for once we get.
Uh huh, yeah.
On there, so.
But we're working towards it, it's moving, so that's good.
Yeah, yeah, at least they're, I, they can, now they can loop me into the meeting, so I can at least um. Be up to speed when, when I finally do have a place on the board.
And it was a years-long process to even get to this point, so it's, it's a long process to change.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you're talking about multi-state too, because some of the counties are in Washington, so they had to get approval through the state of Washington. Through governor's office, and then, yeah, so.
And then the federal government.
Yeah, which has had change, yeah, so.
Yeah. Okay, Commissioner Watkins?
Thank you.
Were you finished?
Yep. Yep.
Um, I just had a couple things, um, little update on the Cedar Springs Road. Um. Andy Lindsey is meeting with Dewey on the paper, or by the paper, excuse me, today. Um. They had several items that they need to discuss uh for the environmental work and some design options. Um, so I went to open up their preliminary thing, and I don't have the authority to do that, so I gotta get that, but um. And also I planned on trying to get with Dewey to touch base with Mr. Hose Apple to uh keep him in the loop where we're out to. Um, no other thing tomorrow, Norcore, I'll be there. Thank you for covering some of the other meetings.
Uh huh.
Um, so, yeah, we have a gen item there, dock the budget, get it done, and then County College the last time.
Okay, all right, uh.
So is Candy College next week or?
Twenty six.
Through the eight.
Yeah.
Out one year.
Yeah.
Yeah, the last one.
Last week, yeah, last one, last week.
Okay, um, just been keeping up on legislative changes. Things are rolling fast and it's the end. Um. The grain lab we've been working on, um, with the help of Anya, our maintenance department, everybody's pitched in to help with the grain lab to get it cleaned out and able to market. Um, all of the items are on the surplus site for the, what will be sold. There are some things that are, have no value that we're also getting rid of are little value. Um. So it has been cleaned, the maintenance has been done. Um. The, the items are all pretty much uh in, in one location, the things that, that are still there. There's a Connex box that has a hundred fifty buckets of grain that belonged to Jordan Maylie, and I've been reached out to him, gave him a, a date that those need to be removed, it will have to find another use for those buckets of grain so that we can store the items that we don't sell, if somebody comes along that wants to rent it, that uh, we can use that storage space. Um, one item I wanted to discuss, and I'm just giving you a heads up about the grain lab, is we received a bid or a quote from uh, it's not Winway, it's um Inland Development Corporation for fiber, and it's fifty six hundred dollars. Um, so between now and the next meeting, let's think about that concept if, um. You know, when I think of this place, we didn't have to find our own fiber. It's a, it's an advantage to rent a place if there's already fiber. It's close, yes, it's expensive, but we do have um a good amount of money in the industrial park um to to run fiber to the building. I know that Arden Mills has their own fiber as well. Previously, I think they were using a radio tower through Frontier Telenet. And that was
At the grain lab.
At the, at the, yeah, the grain lab as well as Arden Mills, and Arden Mills needed a more stable.
Yeah.
So they went about their, they went and got fiber. So it's just something for us to think about before the next meeting. Um, if we want to make that investment.
Fifty six hundred bucks.
Mm-hmm, yeah, the quotes here, yeah, fifty six hundred dollars.
Uh, it's definitely gonna be a deterrent
Uh huh.
for somebody to rent that if there is a
Isn't, yeah.
Fiber good.
Yeah.
For something.
Right.
We can't live without it anymore.
Yeah. Uh, let's see, um, childcare infrastructure grant, the round two awards were just announced. And an in-home care facility in Condon received a hundred thousand dollars from that statewide. It's, there's a lot of requests. And I believe in this round, there was fifteen million dollars available. So there's gonna be a third round, but you know, Contact Business Oregon, if you're interested in that. Uh huh, so that might be an avenue for you. Uh huh, um. The city of Arlington, at the next meeting, um, the city, this will be on the agenda, that Anya will send you a copy of the proposed. They're proposing an IGA for workforce housing at the old motel property. And uh, the IGA, please review it. Um, it's, it's um offering an incentive for development of that property in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. So that's what they're proposing from Gillum County, is two hundred thousand dollars to incentivize the development of that property for the purpose of workforce housing. And we have the economic enhancement ordinance that has workforce housing as a priority in, in the ordinance. So we'll get to the IGA, so you'll have a couple of weeks to look at it, think about it, be able to ask questions, and it'll be agendized at the June second meeting, Ju- July second meeting.
So they're wanting to, but, cuz I, I think I originally heard they were, wanted to make um parking spaces, much like down at the port. But that's, they're not.
Well, I'm not sure. It doesn't give us a lot of detail about what, what that development would be. So, the IGA itself, so have those types of questions ready or reach out
Uh huh.
once you read it, so that when we come to the meeting, you're prepared with some, some of your questions answered.
Because the port trailer facilities, if I'm right, Jed, isn't there something with the Corps of Engineers where you can't have, you have to shut that down so many months?
Yeah.
Season, okay, yeah. And then somebody said that the, the place out here had just sold too, not too long ago. So, but.
Yeah. This park, down, the lower park.
Yeah, yeah, so.
It did.
Yeah, all, all I know is that I know the city's trying to get it developed somehow.
Uh huh.
Now what it is, I don't know.
Right. You would think you, you would need to fit something around it, because this would not be the most ideal spot for families with kids right there alongside the highway.
On the train track.
In the train track.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Okay, all right.
I know that park is full down there. I'm guessing, is it, um. Is there, at four seventy-five Sheen Drive, is there temporary spots there too for parking or not?
Not that I see. I mean, not that I've noticed. I can't speak for them, but um, it doesn't look like it. Um. So did, Jed, did uh, is there limited, is there any limitations now on your park out there, through the port? Okay.
We'll be visiting with the Corps in July, I think when they come to the animal.
Okay. All right, okay.
Well, my other, other understanding is the trailer park at the airport. They're sold out, the city supposedly sold that property to Amazon, so they were gonna have to, or they're relocating to, so. We're
Yeah.
Running out of spaces. Need more spaces.
Okay.
So.
All right. Okay, is there anything else? Okay, next meeting is July second, uh, Condon. And I'll be out some of next week because I'm gonna have a grandchild arrive, so hopefully. Okay, no further business?
Uh, it's still scheduled for the twenty fifth?
Twenty fifth, yes.
Uh huh.
Okay, meeting's adjourned.